I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, we're going to hear a report on FEMA, the CRS report card, action items outlined by the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. If you remember, we have to do this, I believe it's annually, and Emmeline is from our planning and zoning department to give us the presentation. Thanks, Emmeline.
Thank you so much, First Select Woman and the other Board of Selectmen. As the First Select Woman mentioned, this is an annual review. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is done every five years, and within that Hazard Mitigation Plan, there's an action item list, and it covers things like education, like preventative mitigation measures. So there's an ongoing series of action items within that annual plan. Our participation in the community rating system, the CRS program, saves Fairfield residents about $337,000 per year in their annual flood insurance premium pricing, and that number does fluctuate every year depending on how many policyholders we have, how large the individual premium prices are. You know, sometimes with reconstruction, we lose some property owners, sometimes we gain some back, so it really depends. But, you know, so what I would suspect with the annual review is not that there's going to be dramatic change from year to year, but it just shows that the town of Fairfield is actively reviewing its floodplain management policies and its priority projects, and slowly but surely, we're making advancements in terms of moving forward on those projects. So we reviewed this with different town departments, including Conservation and the Fire Department through their emergency management services, of course, with engineering. And some of the progress we've made since the last plan includes getting closer to finishing this, the design work for the Riverside Drive tiegate system. So the hope is that that will be in construction by 2023. In addition, the town's wastewater treatment facility protection project is also almost nearing 100% completion. And then also with the assistance of the ARPA funds, we've been able to prioritize some of the prior planning projects to be able to do coming up in this next calendar year, including some of the beach protection and offshore wave reduction studies, implementing some of the downtown green infrastructure projects and water detention projects within the Rooster River corridor. Fairfield has also, with the work of the Connecticut Institute of Resiliency and Adaptation, we're going to be partnering on a future study to examine ways in which to reduce some of the flooding under our railroad underpasses. Our emergency management department has also installed tide gate markings in the marina and the beach area to give us, with 24-hour remote monitoring, in order to give the town of Fairfield more advanced warning in terms of alerting members of the public that floodwaters are getting higher. That's all I have for this annual review. I know Bill Hurley is on the call today as well. If you have any questions for some of the engineering-related projects, I can also answer some of the questions regarding some of the other items as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Emmeline. I'm going to open it up to the board if they have any questions.
I have a couple of questions, if I might.
Sure, go right ahead.
Thanks. So I was actually reading just in the paper the other day about what happened at Lake Mohegan and the fact that we have an issue there. Do we have any, kind of, it spurred in my mind, do we have any lessons learned from the natural events that happened in the last year that helped inform more of our planning going forward?
Well, in our report, we do mention the fact that we were hit this past calendar year with the remnants of both Hurricane Elsa and Hurricane Ida. And every storm is a little bit different, so I think we learned something from the type of storms that we have, where they end up impacting resources within the town of Fairfield. And with Hurricane Ida in particular, it was just really a fast volume of water that really caused erosion at Lake Mohegan. So, Bill, do you want to add anything to that in terms of, you know, or Anthony, for that matter, in terms of what we saw and how we might be able to respond better?
And by the way, and I was using Lake Mohegan as an example. I would like to hear if there's anything there. But just in general, as we got hit by those storms this year, you know, what did we learn and how do we adapt? And that's kind of what I'm asking, overall.
I'll just answer that the zoning department and engineering and a couple of other departments, Conservation as well, have been working with the Nature Conservancy, MetroCog, and CIRCA to try to come up with the Hazardous Mitigation Plan, which we've already had it published. And in that plan, there was, and don't, I mean, Emmeline would know offhand, but if there was like 28 items that we're trying to address, the goal is to at least knock off a group of them each year, if possible. With Lake Mohegan, we have a consultant, as a matter of fact, I think the bid opening was today, for a consultant to do bathymetric measurements in the lake to find out how much sand did wash into the, to the lake. From there, we'll go with a consultant, you know, a contractor to remove that sand and restore. Done in time for Memorial Day, but we'll have a better idea once the consultants are aboard for that. And then it's just a matter of trying to adopt and adapt. Is in the recent climate change, as Emmeline alluded, in the last two, three years, we've had three significant storms. I mean, I've been here for 30-something years, and these three in particular, outside of maybe one in 2007, all exceed all the ones that I've been here for. Six inches in six hours, eight inches in four hours. I mean, these are really unheard of, and our designs, designed back either in the 50s, 70s, even in the 90s, we never anticipated these type of rainfall events. So some of the things that we're trying to do is, you know, clear the waterways of potential clogs. We're trying to do detention systems. We'll be able to update some people in the public for the Rooster River watershed pretty soon. I did have a recent meeting with a group of 20 of them last month, and I know they've submitted for permits, so unfortunately, they'll take anywhere from two to six months. But once they, permits are approved, we're hoping to get on board, get contractors, and get some of these projects going.
First Select Woman, if the chief can add something, it looks like his hands up as well.
Sure, Chief.
Yep, good afternoon. And Mr. Flynn, in response to your question, there are a number of activities that we're doing. You know, certainly, we rely on DPW and engineering to create those projects that will mitigate the floods when they do occur. But since 2018, when we had that seven-inch rainstorm that flooded Rooster River and the eastern part of the community, and then again last year, a similar storm with four, five inches of rain, we have, you know, upped our game, if you will. Early warning certainly is part of our approach now that we know this higher level of impact is likely to occur using our Fairfield Alert System to target those neighborhoods that are most likely impacted. As Emmeline referred to, having good intelligence, 24-hour monitoring of flood rise at the bioducts, at the marina, and on Fairfield Beach Road allow us to get better messaging to the residents, even down to the point where we are closing roads because even if there's nuisance flood, a car driving down the road during, you know, with standing water will create damage in the adjacent properties by creating a wake and blowing in garage doors, working with the police department to close roads. So in addition to early warning, and we are working, and it didn't make the report, but we're working, because there are so many residents in the Fairfield Beach area, everything south of Gophos Road, working with the Neighborhood Association to provide better guidance. There are some residents, a large number of residents, who have never experienced flooding and really need some good guidance on how to prepare their homes and how to respond effectively to any of the messages that get broadcast by the Fairfield Alert System. And lastly, is our efforts following the storm and recovery. We know that we can prevent a significant amount of damage by getting out into those neighborhoods, and we have made this part of our emergency plan. Sometimes with the police department, sometimes with the Health Department, some just Fire Department personnel and search team members to penetrate those neighborhoods, go house to house to help them navigate how to respond to significant damage in their property, how to prevent further damage, and ultimately, how to apply federal relief. And we have been very effective in doing that, and the response from the community has been extremely positive because there are so many that, you've heard the statement, in all my years in Fairfield, I've never experienced flooding like this. We've heard that over and over and over again. And we're reacting to that because many do not know how to, you know, what do I do first following a flood that damages my garage, my, you know, first floor living cars and other effects? So those three primary responses or primary tactics is how we're responding to help residents adjust to the new normal.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further questions on this item?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's just a report. It's not a voting item. Thank you, Emmeline, very much. I know you work hard on this every year, so. I know it doesn't seem, it's a small presentation, but you actually do a lot of work to make sure we're in compliance, so thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number four. Can I get a motion to approve the non-reoccurring capital for 15 years? This requires Board of Finance and RTM approval to here and consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled "The Resolution Appropriating 358-445 for the Cost of Non-Reoccurring Capital Project" and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation? Going to get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have our usual suspects. We have Jared Schmidt, we have Bill Hurley, Anthony Calabrese, our chief, Karen Dunn, Mike Cummings, and Angeles Pop. George, I'm going to take these items. I mean, Jared, do you think these are supposed to be split up in this or just the 348 items?
Yeah, I would keep these two as they are on the agenda and split those and vote on them separately because one is a 15-year bond and the other one is a 20-year.
Okay, so for, all right, so just for these then, is just the three, is the which two items?
So for this item, this is an item for the police, for the Fire Department, and Chief McCarthy is here. This is for self-contained breathing apparatus, and this is the only item that's in the, that would be in the 15-year bond. There is, this is also accompanied by an application for a grant to go with it. So we are proposing an authorization to spend the full amount and to bond the full amount. However, we, you know, if we receive this grant, we will not have to bond the entire amount. So that's the background, and if their, Chief is obviously here, if he wants to say more or if you have any questions of Chief McCarthy.
All right, I'm going to open it up to questions from the board.
I will have questions, but I'll go after.
Yeah, you can go ahead. I mean, are we, for the public, are, is anyone going to walk through briefly?
So yeah, we're just going to bring up this one item. So Chief, do you want to talk about this item?
Sure, thank you, and I will ask Deputy Chief Dunn to fill in the particulars. We have the opportunity, we actually, we applied for this grant last year and were unsuccessful. We coordinated with the FEMA regional staff to help us understand why we were not successful last year. We adjusted our request. Self-contained breathing apparatus have become very expensive as the technology increases, you know, where somewhere north of $9,000 per unit. And so we've applied for replacement, adding on the technology, and applied for a grant from FEMA to cover this cost. Wherever possible, we try to match our requests, our capital project requests with grant opportunities. There are specific requirements from FEMA, the Assistant Firefighter Act Grant. It has to have certain attributes in order to qualify. This one does, so we wanted to jump on it. The request is for $358,000, which will replace 38 self-contained breathing apparatus units. FEMA will not cover the full cost of the unit. Our cost is somewhere north of $9,000. Currently, they are only approving $7,000 per unit. So in addition to the 10% cost share, we have to make up the difference of almost $2,200 per unit. That leaves the Fire Department throughout the town of Fairfield's share at $116,000. And the balance, if approved, would come out of the grant at $241,818.
So, Chief, it's, Tom, a couple of questions here. Can somebody, whether you or Jared, walk me through that math again? So you're asking for approval for 358, is that right, Jared?
Right, 358-444.
That's right. Of which you estimate you're going to get how much back from FEMA?
$241,818. I'm sorry, Jared, I didn't read your step-by.
That was Deputy Chief. Go ahead, go ahead, Karen.
I'm sorry, Chief, is what Chief said, is $241,818 from FEMA. Now, it's a conservative estimate of $7,000 that we're going to get back from FEMA, but we were kind of told that it's very possible that FEMA will, because of, they're realizing more and more that the costs are skyrocketing, but we do think that it's very possible that they'll give more than $7,000 per unit at this point, but we have to give what was the traditional amount of $7,000 for this application.
Okay, so in the write-up, it says 266. Like, I'm in part three?
Yep.
Okay, so where do I get the, again, I'm kind of losing it here. You say we could be awarded a grant of 266. They said a 10% cost share, so you're reducing the 266 to get the 241, and you're saying we're going to have to fund the additional, which is 116. Is that right?
Yes, the 116 is the delta between what we would normally get in the 10%, but that's.
Okay, but where's the 260? It says it could be 266, then all of a sudden, it says it's 241, right? So the difference between the 266 and the 241, is that, what is that delta there? Not in terms of actual dollars, but what does that represent?
I'll leave that to you, Deputy Chief.
And while he's going to that, we approve this, just for clarification. We can come back to that, the question on the dollars, Deputy Chief, but we approve this, the town's approving to spend 358 on this regardless of whether we get the grant or not, correct?
That's right.
Okay, so it could cost us as much as 358, or it could cost us as little as 116, fair?
That's fair.
All right. Chief, what I'm trying to figure out is, and forgive my memory, as I recall, we've been, I want to say we've been buying this kind of routinely?
No, so the last time we did this was as a part of a grant about two years ago or three years ago, where we replaced 28 of our masks. We have a total riding positions amount of masks of 66. We replaced 28 by using an AFG grant also, so we got the benefit of that. And this is the complement of the 38 remaining ones. They were bought at different times, so these 38 are, you know, coming due as far as being out of, out of compliance with NFPA this year.
Should we, does it make any sense to put these, kind of like we do a vehicle replacement plan and stuff like that? Does it make any sense to put these on a more routine replacement plan as opposed to, you know, it sounds like some of these are 12 years old, right? Is this, you know, a once-every-12-year thing, or, you know, what's the optimal way to manage this, Karen?
Let me speak to that, Tom, Mr. Flynn.
Tom's okay with it.
There is, and we do try to spread out those items that can be purchased in an appropriate number each year to flatten the cost. Self-contained breathing apparatus is a specialized unit because as the standards change, the units will change, and we want to make sure that there is absolute familiarity with the units so that no, any firefighter that walks in, puts an air pack on, is identical to the one he wore yesterday. And if we did this, you know, dollar-cost averaging purchase approach, we would have a mishmash of safety equipment that would be inherently difficult for firefighters to use safely.
Because each year it changes a little bit.
A little bit, a little bit.
Right, but enough so that if you had, if someone used a 2020 model versus a 2022 model, they might be off a little bit, and that's a little bit more interesting.
All right. So they do change, every five years, the standard changes, and sometimes it's just little things, but right at this point, we're getting, so that we're a little bit incompatible. There's a few things that are very different. One of the things we had said, that first group of masks, the low air is, with the newer standards, the low air warning comes when there's 33% less, 33% air left in your tank. Now, these older ones that we're looking to replace, the alarm goes off when there's 25% of air. So that's a little, you know, you're getting warning a little later, so. Certain things after, and, you know, there's a couple of other improvements for safety. So, you know, we're looking, you know, to make, I think the gist of the standard changes are that they're making them safer each time they meet and they, you know, change the standard. So are the 266, so if we just purely went 266 times $7,000, if we went 38 units times $7,000, that equals $266,000. So that would be purely, if that's what our masks cost, we'd ask for $266,000, and we'd have to pay, you know, minus the 10% local share. But since we're looking for air masks that have a few different options that we've normally used, our cost, our unit cost is $9,400, which $9,432 times 38 is going to equal, I bet, is going to equal 358,000. That's what the difference in those numbers.
So what's the difference between the 266 and the 241?
So the 260, so if you just, 266 is just for us to know how much it would purely cost at $7,000.
Yep.
If we asked for 38 units at the actual cost, $9,400, that's going to equal 358,000.
Right.
FEMA will pay us $241,000 according to, you know, their cost share calculation.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we confused you.
Yeah, no, this is actually, to be honest, this is very confusing, the stance here.
Deputy Chief, can I try and correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think the way it works is that, and the difference that you're looking for, Selectman Flynn, is that the reimbursement of the grant would be 266. However, we need to make a 10% contribution, the town needs to make a 10% contribution that eats into that, which makes it the 241. Is that, Deputy Chief, is that, is that an accurate explanation of the difference between the two?
I think, well, I think when you and I went over these figures with FEMA, we saw that if we need to buy these and they're going to cost us 358,000, FEMA will pay out of that in the calculation, 241,000, and they will have to pay 116,600.
Let me ask another question. This is under 15-year bonds. The things you're replacing, how old are they?
These are, let's see, these are 2007, they're 12 years old.
So why wouldn't we do this under a 10-year bond? I mean, we can't do 12-year bonds. We can do 10-year bonds, though, right, Jared?
We have done those. This was the recommendation of our bond council to do them as 15-year bonds. I think they've had experience with other towns and.
Well, they might have, but our policy, yeah, our policy is not further than their useful lives. So what are their useful lives, I would ask to the Fire Department?
Three cycles, and each cycle is five years, so we figured that's 15.
So that is 15, but we're replacing the current ones at 12?
Well, yes, because the ones that we have are starting to wear out, and the new, they're three cycles behind in their compatibility with the, our other units.
So are we going to have the same problem when these things are 15 years old, 12 years old?
Well, we might. I guess there's a problem, you don't want to do it too soon, you don't want to do it too late, so we're just trying to get it as close as we can to it.
No, I get it, I get it. I'm just literally, I'm not talking about how, when you throw them out, you know, if you use them for 12, 13 years. We just have a policy that's, you know, you try to match the useful life, or you go less than the useful life so that you're not paying for something that you've discarded. You see what I'm saying?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Nancy, do you have any questions?
Yeah, no, this is clarifying, it's helpful, thank you.
Okay, very good.
I, Madam, First Select Woman, I do think we should look at these as 10-year bonds as opposed to 15-year bonds, given the fact that the 15 years does seem beyond the useful life that we're keeping them. That's the only comment I have.
No, I understand, but I think Jared said he checked with our bond council, who reviewed all of this information and made this recommendation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, on this particular item, and I don't mean any disrespect to our bond council, but it's against the bonding policy of the town. I don't, you know, it's not illegal from bond council, I get it. But the useful lives of this don't appear to be 15 years. The useful lives appear to be 12 years, which would be more analogous to a 10-year bond. That's my only point.
Right, but the bond council is aware of our policies, right?
Maybe not. I have no idea what our bond council is aware of.
Tom, could you just? It's been the bond council for quite a long time, but go ahead, Nancy.
Yeah, but this is a financing thing, not a bond council thing.
Could you just talk about that a little bit more so I can understand? Because I, I'd like to help make an informed decision here, but I don't.
Yeah, basically, I equate it to the fact that if you buy a car and you're paying it off over five years, and you decide to get rid of the car after four years and you don't get anything back on the value, and you're still making payments on the car for that fifth year while you're not using the car. This is exactly what this is. You're basically financing it over a longer period of time, then you're going to use the equipment. So what you're going to be doing is you're going to be paying for this equipment for an additional three years after you've retired it, when you're also paying for new equipment, right?
So what's the, that's a good analogy because it helps me understand. So then what's the downside of flipping it, even though it's like, again, within the parameters? So then what's the downside of flipping it, even though it's like, again, within the parameters of bonding and what's?
Yeah.
I hear that it's right, but what's the downside?
The downside, the downside of what? Of doing it ten years versus fifteen years? You're paying more upfront, you're paying for it in a quicker period of time. So in our car analogy, it could be the difference of you paying six hundred dollars a month versus five hundred dollars a month over the period of the bond, which in this instance is ten years versus fifteen years.
Is it consequential? I mean, is that something that we should have?
To me, it's not consequential. It's just to go fifteen years, it's outside of.
No, the point is if we're saving, you know, the upfront cost, is it inconsequential, how it translates? I mean, if it's not going to felt, if we're not going to feel the impact, if it's not going to impact how we're able to do it, but if it's either saving money in the long term because we're not paying for something we're using, or, you know, if that, that seems like a good use of our.
I don't understand. I, I'm not following. I'm saying that going fifteen years, which is beyond the useful life of the asset, is.
Right, because you're paying for something you're potentially not using, right, so I understand that. So my point is if we have to pay a little more upfront, but we're going to be using it, is what we have to pay upfront consequential?
No.
Will it impact?
Not in my, not in my.
And that's what I'm asking for that, is that an analysis that's easy to understand? So that if we're going to make a decision here, if that's even within our powers.
It's absolutely within our powers.
So then, is that information that would be useful in making this decision or determination?
So, so I would recommend, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but, Tom, if you feel strongly about it, why don't you make an, a motion to amend to ten years?
That's what I was going to do. I just wanted to have the conversation, and again, I'm, I'm just trying to keep us within our policy, that's all.
Okay.
Based on what the chief said, that's all.
Again, I'm just trying to, so I can support that.
Here's the difference, Nancy, Nancy, just cocktail napkin math, forgetting about interest for a minute. It's three hundred and fifty-eight thousand divided by ten over three hundred and fifty-eight thousand divided by fifteen.
Right, I mean, cocktail napkin math.
So it's three hundred, it's thirty-five thousand dollars, thirty-six thousand dollars a year versus twenty-four thousand dollars a year.
Divided by, you know, resident, right.
It's not divided by anything.
Well, I'm just saying for what we're going to be, no one's going to feel the impact of that. We're paying for something upfront to potentially save later, that's my point.
They're going to feel more of the impact in the last three years.
Right.
Exactly. If you're, in the long term, you're going to be paying for this equipment plus the new equipment at the same time.
And if bond council, even though this is not necessarily standard, if they don't have a problem with it, I would be supportive. I would, I would want to hear any potential problems that they would have with this. Or Jared, or, you know, whoever can make that.
You can, you can choose to amend the resolution. And go, and go to ten years.
Yeah, I'm open to doing that if we could want to move it along and have Tom make the motion. I don't think.
Yeah, I'll make them, thank you.
I don't think it's a big deal one way or the other, but sure.
Okay, that's, I just.
Yeah, thank you for that. I'll make the motion that we amend the bond resol, well, first of all, we put the resolution before us. I'm sorry, I don't remember that motion.
Yeah, I made a motion of what's written on your agenda.
Got it.
Seconded it, so if you want to make a motion to amend.
I'll make a motion to amend the bond resolution from fifteen years, from a fifteen-year term to a ten-year term.
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any just further discussion on this item?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, for the amended motion. Do we need to go back and do anything with our original?
Okay, so we will make a motion, I'll ask for a motion on item number four as amended.
I'll make that motion, Madam First Selectwoman.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chiefs.
Thank you, Chiefs.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is item number five. Can I get a motion to approve the non-reoccurring capital for twenty years? This requires Board of Finance and RTM approval to hear and consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled, a resolution appropriating three million eight sixty-seven eight ninety-nine for the costs of certain non-reoccurring capital projects and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. And I, I think what we'll do is just take them in order as they appear in our backup. And so the first two items are conservation items, the Pine Creek McClary Tide Gate Repair, and then the Riverside Creek Tide Gate Repair. And we have Tim Bishop, our Conservation Director, and I believe Bill Hurley is also on the line. So I'll hand it over to these two gentlemen. And I know each of you have the fourteen points on these items in the backup. So I'll open it up, Tim or Bill.
By the way, thank you, everybody, for doing the fourteen points. It's, it's very helpful to me, so I appreciate your efforts on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam First Selectwoman. Yeah, just in summary, they're both pretty, pretty similar projects at different locations. Both title floodgates, one Pine Creek McClary Tide Gate, which is down by Fairfield Beach Road, across the creek from Pine Creek Avenue and Old Dam Road. And the Riverside Creek Tide Gate is a part of a different riverine system on Ash Creek, just north of the Town Marina. Both are, are coming to the end of their life, they're corrugated metal culverts. They manage, obviously manage the tides in and out of tidal estuary wetlands, and do their job of flood control. There's the costs, the anticipated costs include the design permitting and installation. And that's, that's really all I have. I'll, I'll take questions from anyone, try and answer.
Okay, I'll open it up to the board.
I actually don't have any questions on these two items, much to your chagrin, I'm sure.
Yeah, I don't either.
All right, well, obviously, you know, we've had some issue, we've had a lot of infrastructure issues throughout the town, and I'm glad that these are, these are up and on the agenda because they are important items. So that's good, all right. We're going to go to our next two items, engineering, underwater bridge inspection and repairs, and increased resiliency, open space at Jennings Beach Design, and I'm going to hand that over to Bill Hurley.
Okay, thanks. In your backup, if you were able to read it, the DOT was unable to perform a detailed inspection for the Old Field Bridge, and they were only performed a screening inspection. And in that information, they recommended the town hire a consultant to do the inspection that would include divers, a boat or raft, timber planks, lighting. You know, this is a specialized bridge inspection that is really necessary to establish the true condition of the bridge. The bridge was built in nineteen thirty-five, so it's approaching almost ninety years old. The, as, the inspection would be needed for the superstructure, the deck. They'd have, they'd look for scour conditions, substructure, footings, abutments, and, and the wing walls. And then by them doing that particular one, which is the main crux of the request, they would do that inspection, they would come up with recommendations, and then we would be able to do some short-term solutions. Now, it is possible they're going to tell us, well, you might squeeze another five or ten years, and then you're going to have to replace the bridge or something like that, but obviously that would be a whole nother situation, and we would have to apply for funding for that at a later time. But before we even go anywhere near that, we want to get a full detailed inspection. The proposal also includes a handful of culverts that, for various reasons, either engineering or a previous consultant, unable to get to. And so again, it needs to be more of a specialized and out of the typical scope of a simple, or I should say simple, but a typical inspection of a bridge, that these are a little bit more involved. And they would, as I said, mention a handful of culverts for that. So I'm here to answer any questions that anybody might have on this proposal.
Thank you, Bill. I'll open up to the board for any questions.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. I was just trying to look here, but I was having trouble pulling up the backup. When was the last time an inspection was done? I supported and obviously recognized the importance of it. I was just curious.
I believe it was late twenty sixteen was the state inspection, and the screening put it in a fair-to-poor category. And all the ones that have come before the, the boards in the past couple of years, we tried to do like one or two. We won't obviously want to overwhelm the system. And those were more, I guess, in, in worse shape, or in poor condition. This one especially, given the age, and at an extreme low tide, you can definitely see some bridge scour. You can see a couple of exposed rebars, and, and, and I was thinking of putting it in last year, but we had other requests. So this is the time for this inspection.
And, and the turnaround to get it started from when they identify potential issues to when we might be seeing any repairs? Is it like years, or is it, I'm just?
Well, no, we, we hope to, once the funding gets approved, we, we would have to put out an RFP, but we already have an RFQ from the MetroCog on Bridge Teams, and we could use that, so that would shorten the process. And then from there, we would hire the consultant. They would probably do an inspection, probably within a couple of months. And then from there, again, whatever their recommendations are, they, they may need to obtain permits, depending on, on the, what's really recommended. For instance, I'll just say if it was a deck replacement, it's a very short permit, it's no big deal. If we had to fill in some scour holes, it might involve what they call a certificate of permission. And then if there was something a little bit more major, we would need the full-blown permit. If, if they recommended extreme improvements, as I said, then we would, we would have to go back to the board. But we're hoping to at least do a stopgap measure and, and get the bridge repaired, and then go for the, the funding in future years. We're also always looking at grant money, as you, as you know, for any of these type of projects as well.
I'm sorry, Nancy, are you done?
No, just to say thank you. I was just curious about what to anticipate in terms of spending, like what would come before us for this next year. That's all, thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Tom?
Yeah, thanks, Bren. Bill, first of all, thanks. Question for you, though. These studies, is this typical that we have to do this? My, my concern being, let's go back to the prior discussion, this is an inspection, right? It's not actual work. And yet, because of the size and the expense of it, we want to bond it. But we're not sure it's going to be part of a larger project. I, I guess what I want to ask in that regard is, would we be penny-wise and pound foolish? I mean, we've been ninety years on this bridge, right? I mean, you'd argue we've got our money's worth on it. This isn't going to be a situation where we go in and we spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on an inspection to say we can get an extra five years out of it if we spend an extra two hundred and fifty thousand in repairs. And then in five years, we're going to be spending six million dollars to replace the bridge. You know, that's what I'm trying to get my arms around. At ninety years, if you had said this was twenty-five years, thirty years, I get it. At ninety years, are we looking at full bridge replacement anyway? Should we be planning on that and trying to get grants and funds to take care of that?
Those are good questions, Tom, and, and the answer is yes. Now, one thing I want to mention is that the inspections are about thirty thousand. I've already incorporated the rest for at least what I call the short-term repairs to buy us time. If it's something super critical, then obviously I might have to come back four months from now with, with the, with the condition of the bridge. But if they say, oh, you know, spending a hundred thousand buys you five years, and then that gives us the opportunity, you know, to apply, and, and as you already know, we already have three or four bridges in the, in the hopper, so it kind of just, it spaces the time out.
Yeah, and first of all, thanks for the clarification on one, the one fifty represents, that's very helpful to me, so thank you for that. But again, I'll go back to the earlier conversation on the other item. Spending a hundred and twenty thousand for, to get five years and bonding it over twenty years gives me agita, right? And particularly if you're saying that there's no way this bridge is going to last an extra twenty years, it's already at ninety years.
The only other thing I could think of is, if there was a way to bond the smaller amount, and this is just thinking out of the box, if you wanted to drop it to a hundred thousand, we get the report, and if the report says, you know, we need the, the full, you know, with the rest of the one twenty, then, then we, we get it, then, then that's fine. I have no problem with that. Or I can give you an update. Once the report is done, I can certainly come back to the Board of Finance, even if, even if this gets approved, to go back, Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen, and, you know, give the, the boards an update. Because if it does seem like, just as you mentioned, you know, that we're just going to throw the money away, then, then there's no, you know, sense doing that. It's just that, as you know, it's a fairly busy road, and, you know, if we can hang on, I just wanted to make sure we keep it open.
Yeah, no, I agree with you on that. I just don't want to be penny-wise and pound foolish, you know what I mean?
Well, I can give you my personal, you know, the old days of a handshake or verbal, that if the, when the reports are completed, I can certainly come back to the board and, and give you an update before we go any further.
That's what I would like.
Mm-hmm.
Really understand it.
I have no problem with that at all. And I think it's a smart move, too.
So would that mean drop this to thirty or forty K and pull the rest out and have you come back?
I leave that up to Jared on that.
Jared, what's your thought?
You're saying to drop the request to thirty?
Yeah, drop it to thirty, or, yeah, Bill, is thirty enough?
Well, I, 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 I think it is, based on, on what I've been told as preliminary, you know. So I think that's enough. If you want to make it forty, just to make sure, that, that's fine with me, but thirty should be enough.
Okay. I just want to do, I'm going to do this right, and I want to make sure that we're not being penny-wise and pound foolish, and that's no disrespect to you, Bill.
Oh, and I don't take it that way. I mean, that was, as I said, if it was a way of doing it that way, that's what I would recommend anyway. I, I, I mean, until we get the report, we're like, you know, somewhat blind, blindfolded.
Right. That's how I feel, too. Okay, thank you for your, your openness to that, and to that discussion.
Sure.
Okay, do you have any additional questions, Nancy?
No, I was just going to see, do we, should we make a formal motion, or how, this is, we're taking it as a group, so how do we?
Do it at the end, maybe? That's, I'll.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we still have additional items, so.
Thank you, goodness.
Okay, so I'm just going to go on to our next.
Sure.
Item, items, and we have Anthony on the line to discuss.
Excuse me, Brenda, excuse me, did they want to talk about the resiliency? Yes or no?
Yeah.
The other one, I had a second item.
Yeah.
Sure, just a little recap is the Army Corps of Engineer published a Connecticut Coastal Storm Risk Management Study that included Fairfield, and the objective was to reduce damages and manage risk from the coastal storms. The Army Corps analyzed safety and risk significance, potential damage, emergency access, and critical infrastructure. The report provided concept-level analysis for various alternatives. uh, that would include potential flood protection and layouts. This included analyzing all the way from like the Sasko Hill slash South Pine Creek Beach area all the way to the Ash Creek Riverside Drive near the Bridgeport Line. It was a very, it was very expensive and it was almost $600 million. Uh, what this proposal uh, proposes to do is to break it up, break up the study and only look at maybe one of the more critical or smaller uh, design segments from Jennings Beach to the Ash Creek um, section. And um, we, it was listed as a priority by our Fairfield Flood and Erosion and Resiliency Board and with Engi- Engineering Concurrents. The design would investigate flood walls and maybe if there were other lower cost uh, alternatives. Uh, maybe diodes or improvement of the tiegate structures. Um, uh, or or if there's any other like hybrid even to where we can maybe reduce uh, costs uh, for for the project. Uh, this is important to note is the benefit cost analysis would be performed. And that's uh, that's vital in trying to get the um, any uh, uh, funding uh, from FEMA in particular, but sometimes other grant possibilities as well. We have just, just last week, we we submitted a CIRCA grant uh, that could cover 10 or 20,000 dollars of this request, uh, if we get the uh, benefit cost analysis um, as part of the grant uh, through CIRCA. Uh, so again, just another example of we're always trying to look for for grant money, you know, to try to reduce the costs of studies, designs or inspections. The uh, design and the benefit cost analysis, uh, as I mentioned before, could make the project FEMA uh, grant eligible and then we'd have a better idea of um, uh, the costs, what particular design elements uh, once they're completed. Um, as I mentioned before, the full disclosure is it's going to be expensive. And um, it it could be anywhere from 50 to like 150 million dollars to do this. Uh, so that's why it's obviously important to get FEMA grant money or any other grants that are possible uh, to proceed with the project. Unfortunately, you know, the do nothing alternative doesn't doesn't leave us in in good shape either as there's, you know, with the rising sea level and more intense coastal storms, um, things are not going to get better. They're only going to get worse. That's what this proposal is for, is at least get the more detailed design and uh, and a better feel of um, plus estimates, plans, and with the intention of obviously to go further with that we're uh, we're eligible for FEMA grants. Army Corps grant or whatever grants are available.
I'm just happy you're not asking for 600 million.
No, not yet.
Okay, so we're gonna, thank you, Bill. We're gonna go on to our next items, um, the park and rec items, Lake Mohegan, tennis center light replacement, post tension tennis courts and Jackie Durrell Pavilion upgrades. I'm gonna hand this over to Anthony.
Uh, thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
I'll start with Lake Mohegan. Um, you guys did get a little bit of a recap on that from Emmeline and Bill earlier. Um, the $500,000 that we're asking for is to uh, essentially dredge the swim area and restore the beach area. Um, I tried to provide you guys within within the 14 points some pictures so you had an idea of what the beach currently looks like. Um, we did reach out to three vendors prior to putting out an RFP, um, just to get a ballpark figure of, you know, where the restoration is going to come in. Um, so with that, that's how we were able to come up with the $500,000 number. We do have the design services out. Um, it just got back today, the results, so um, we have a good idea of where those are. It hasn't been awarded yet, um, but we are under um, where we thought we would be for the design services. So I'm happy to take any questions about Lake Mohegan.
Nance, do you have anything?
No, I I always love to hear what you have to say first, though.
Um, Anthony, thanks for the note. What's our opportunity for reimbursement on this?
Uh, 75%, and that was just declared last, we, uh, earlier, four days ago, February 3rd, the uh, the governor made that announcement.
And that's based on what? That's where are we getting that reimbursement?
That would be from FEMA itself.
What about, our insurance doesn't cover any of this at all?
We have a $500,000 deductible, so.
Yeah.
That's where we are.
It's funny that it's the same amount, and is it not?
It's pretty ironic.
So we're thinking that this is going to end up costing us a little over $100,000, something in that area, 125,000, is that right?
That's correct.
And that's based, how assured are we? Where are we in that process? I know, what did FEMA just declare? Because of the storms, we applied. We haven't been approved or anything yet, right?
Uh, we we have not been approved yet. Um, we have been in talks with FEMA since September when this this did happen. Uh, they asked us to submit some uh, estimates to them. We used that $500,000 number back then. Um, that jumped off the page at them and they wanted to meet, so we did have a Zoom call with them to give them an understanding of how we came up with that number. Um, and then, like I said, recently it has been um, finally declared for municipalities. It was private owners, it was declared a while ago, but um, municipalities was just declared a couple of days ago.
Okay.
Can I?
Go ahead, Nance.
With that, is there a strict set of guidelines in terms of compliance? And I know people are feeling a little frosty with the Penfield situation and FEMA and reimbursement. Is there, are there clear metrics and guidelines that we'll be able to have and share and so that everybody understands what the process is and that there's?
Yeah, I I don't know that at this point, uh, but that our plan is to follow everything that they give us. Um, so like I said, we've been in talks with them. Right now, it seems pretty straightforward. Um, it, you know, they're just saying, you know, whatever restoration work you do, um, you know, that'll be reimbursed at the 75% mark, so. Um, you know, the the good news is we have really good documentation of, you know, directly after the storm, what it looked like. You know, we have pictures from before the storm. So, you know, for them to see the amount of damage that the uh, the storm created, uh, you know, they they understand that. And now, you know, we've asked five different design firms on our shortlist to um, come up with the design uh, you know, estimates. So um, with that, they're all, for the most part, within the same ballpark. Um, we were specifically looking for a group that can get this project, you know, done by Memorial Day to meet our our timeline to have the lake open on time. Um, so that's still, time is really of the essence for us.
It is, of course, and I think whatever you can do for the community and and those benchmarks and metrics to to make sure that there isn't a like 11th hour. We think we're getting reimbursed and then there's that gotcha. I know, again, we don't want to get stung, so.
No, and I I agree with that 100%, and you know, the way I look at this one is regardless, this work has to be done. Whether they were going to reimburse us or not, we're going to be spending $500,000 on this.
Yep, fair. Better to get reimbursed, but yes, I agree. I agree.
That's, yeah, exactly right. There's no other options here, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, um, tennis center lights. This is down at our, on our old damn road. Um, you guys probably call it the tennis bubble. Um, but we do have lights there that were put in in 1989. You guys have seen this project come before you if you've been around a while, as I know all of you have. I think this is at least my fifth time presenting this one. Um, but those lights were put in 1989. Um, they go out every year, several times a year. Our uh, our building maintenance supervisor does a good job of bringing in contractors to uh, get them back up and running. But they really are, again, at their their end of their useful life. There are six courts there now. When these were installed, there were only five courts. When we redid the tennis center down there, that building, and they added a sixth court, so the sixth court doesn't even have lights on it. Um, we are just about that $100,000 mark um, to put in new light there. All LED compliant, um, you know, uh, night uh, night scape type lights, so that it's not lighting up the entire neighborhood. So um, the way lighting is now, um, we really shouldn't get any, we wouldn't get more complaints than we do about the lights now, and we don't normally get complaints about those lights, so.
Bill, a couple question, or Bill, yeah, sorry, Anthony. Um, a couple of questions on this. Do we, are, is the tennis bubble the group that operates the tennis bubble? Are they making any money off this?
Yeah, they're a for-profit organization, so they absolutely make money.
So are they getting, are they renting these courts and making money on this is what I'm asking?
Yes, they would be making money on anything outside of their lease. So their their lease is just for the building and use of the tennis court. They pay us roughly 100, 110,000 dollars a year or so.
Right. Are we obligated under the terms of that lease or anything to replace these lights? Are they, is there any shot that they should be paying for some of this as well?
No, the lights, lights are our, are our cost. Um, things in the building are at our cost. Um, actual tennis court maintenance itself is on them.
Do, have they been keeping up with their tennis court maintenance and we're happy with everything in that arrangement that's going on with them right now?
Yes, they're they're a first-class operation, no doubt about it.
How often are these tennis courts utilized? What is the, you know, the amount of time?
I'd have to ask them for uh, usage reports, but um, you know, during, yeah, specifically during the summer, they're used up until, you know, nine, 10 o'clock at night. Um, when they put the bubble up, I assume it's roughly the same, but um, I don't want to assume.
And so the existing lights there are over 30 years old, so we've gotten our useful life out of those lights and you expect to get a similar or even greater amount out of these lights?
That's the hope, yeah.
Will this save us costs? Are we saving the, are we, um, because you're talking LED lighting, are we going to save on energy costs down there because of this as well?
So they pay the electric cost, so they'll see, they should see us as savings.
So this is really a question of us being kind of a a good partner, a good landlord, so to speak, and giving them something to to keep it enticing. I mean, is that the idea?
Yeah, I mean, they are our facilities, you know. Yes, they have a long-term lease there, but we should maintain our facilities.
Have they been complaining because these haven't been working because they've been going out and they have been complaining? And how much does it, how much do we spend each year on maintenance on these things because of it?
It's several thousand dollars. I believe the last time I asked James, it was probably, you know, in the neighborhood of 15 to 20,000 in repairs.
Per year?
Per year. And I I could double check that and get that back to you, but I I believe that that was the number that was given to me.
And and with these lights, that 15 to 20,000 per year goes down to what?
Well, I'd like to think with the maintenance, it essentially goes away for a few years until lights need to be replaced. But LED lights, uh, for the most part, um, have a long, long life expectancy.
Yeah, I would have that number for the Board of Finance so that they know, I'd nail that down.
Yep.
Because that's uh, particularly absolutely correct. If you're spending that amount of money over five to seven years, something like that, putting this on $100,000 makes all the sense in the world right there.
Yep.
And reducing the cost, so I'd have that right away.
I'll double check it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I don't have any questions on this.
Okay, um, next project.
Okay, so I'm sorry, Anthony. Go right ahead.
Uh, next project's the Dwight Tennis Courts. Um, again, I I I think the easiest thing to do is just to look at the pictures of these courts. Um, these courts are uh, bituminous courts, which is asphalt. Um, asphalt courts last 10 to 12 years. Um, last time these were replaced, I believe, was in 2007, so again, they're at their end of their useful life. Um, any location that we have uh, two or, you know, essentially more than two courts um, over the last several years, we've been making a concerted effort to go to post tension concrete, which gives us a 20-year um, guarantee against cracks and a 10-year guarantee on the lines. Um, with a court like this, with a bituminous court, um, after about four years, you're replacing and resurfacing every two years. Um, to redo these courts is around $68,000 every two years. Um, so again, while we might be paying more upfront um, for the post tension, it it just makes long-term sense. Um, and the courts that we just recently done, I'm not sure if you guys are tennis players, but we did the Blake Tennis Courts at Fairfield Ward a few years ago. We just did Ludlow High School's tennis courts uh, last year, and then we just redid Tomlinson Middle School. So um, while we don't have an example of courts that have been in existence for 20 years with the post tension, we're already, I I would say, reaping the benefits of that and, you know, people, the residents like the post tension. So my recommendation is to replace the courts that are at Dwight with post tension um, for the cost of 550,000. Um, the cost is a little more expensive for these ones just because of the layout. Um, these courts, you have two courts that are up high and then two that are like four feet lower than those. There's really not a way to make them even. Um, so we would still have that that difference in height, so it just adds to the the cost a little bit. Um, these courts are, besides recreation and um, public use, they are used for the uh, for Ludlow High School tennis team as well.
These courts are used for Ludlow High School?
They are.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Sorry for what?
Well, I I I, are we done with this item? I apologize.
No, 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 no. Sorry. I do have a few questions on it if we don't.
Oh, okay. Go right ahead.
Nance, I don't want to cut you off. Do you want to go?
Nope, we're good.
Okay, so Anthony, how much are we spending per year on these courts on maintenance right now? Do you know?
Well, we would resurface these every two to the tune of about 60,000.
And we've been doing that up until recently?
I haven't done these ones since, I think, 2016 or so.
Okay.
My plan, they do need to be replaced, so even if we didn't go with post tension, they're past the point of resurfacing. So this would have, they'd have to be ground up and, you know, relayed as bituminous.
So let me, so the bituminous only goes 10 to 12 years from what you're saying?
That's correct.
And that's about where these are?
Correct.
And they're what, half the price or that, am I wrong on that? Maybe I made that up.
Um, they would be about um, it's about 120,000 a cord, is that right? 120, 12, 12? It it would be 400,000 or so to, I I would say 380, 400, depending on yeah, supply chain's a whole different issue right now. I mean, these, in a normal year, a normal year, it would have been 380 or so.
Right. Um, okay, so we're going to save having to do the 68,000, which you you estimate we have to do two years. We double the useful life by using this, the post tension as opposed to what we've had there before, right?
That's correct.
When you guys were doing Gould Manor, you added pickleball because it's become such a big deal. Is this pickle, pickleball quote unquote, I I don't know what the terminology is, enabled as well?
Yeah, um, the the plan would be with these is to double line them, so line them in a different color for pickleball, to overlay the pickleball lines.
Okay, so that is, that that was the goal of this. So this is tennis courts and helps alleviate the pickleball.
Yep, that's correct. It does help with that as well, yes.
So when we talked about our long-range planning and all that, and I know Mr. Papa George is on the phone for upcoming stuff. Um, there was the discussion about what's going to go on with Dwight. And I know that's in the very early stages and I don't want to, I I'm not making any public statement here, but I think the um, Board of Ed is looking at all their facilities and and I think Dwight School's in pretty rough shape. Um, as I recall, I don't remember what the number was. I want to say it was close to 50, 50 some odd million. So my question there is, let's say the Board of Education decides to go in a different direction with Dwight School, and I'm not, I have no inside knowledge on that. Would these tennis courts, what would that be used for?
Well, I think Dwight could make a great recreation center, if you ask me. Get some really good land up there, but uh, it is off the beaten path, so I, that's question for someone else, I think.
Right, and it's also got a baseball field up there that is, from what I understand, is in very rough shape.
Well, all the emails I, all the emails I have say it was in the the best shape it's ever been in this past season. But yes, historically, it does have some drainage issues.
That's what I was talking about, the drainage issues, but there's been some work done up there to clean it up this past year.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's my only concern is, I I mean, I, look, we know there's a lot. we know there's a lot of tennis players in town. We know that's a section of town that can use this. We also know there's an increase in the pickleball playing universe. We know that these courts are in rough shape. So the need is there. What I don't want to do is start doing this and then find out there's another plan for that school and all of a sudden we have beautiful tennis courts there that, that don't have something attached. I just don't want to be foolish here. You see what I'm saying?
I understand that.
Mr. Flynn, can I jump in for one second?
Please.
I just, just so you know, as you know, and many people know, there's been a lot of discussion with the Dwight property and the building, the condition of it. To my knowledge, at this time, there would be nothing that would affect the tennis courts that has been discussed moving forwards. The tennis courts, where they are situated on the property, no matter what you decide to do in that area, should be in a good location and continue being where they are.
Okay. Okay, good to know, thank you. Okay. And these, the useful lives of these new courts are gonna be twenty years or so?
Or so, yeah, I would hope more, but yes.
Okay, and they're holding up well? You had said that we've got other courts that have been done with this technology and they're performing as thought?
Yeah, as expected, which is pleasantly surprising.
Yeah, yeah, no, that always hasn't been our case, so thank you for that. I have no further questions on this item, I appreciate it.
All right, very good.
I've got one more.
I'm, I'm sorry, Anthony.
That's okay. Jackie Durrell Pavilion Kitchen and Restroom Upgrades. Again, this is one of those ones, like the, the lights you guys have seen before, I think just this past year. So, you know, a hundred and three thousand is what we're looking to do. We escalated that from the hundred thousand request just on the three percent. But again, this is to upgrade the kitchen facilities and the bathroom facilities. We gave the ballroom itself a makeover in two thousand and twenty. And now, you know, the biggest complaint we get from people, it's been several years, is in, you know, the condition of the kitchen and bathrooms. We'd like to make them ADA compliant and, and again, like to give a facelift to the kitchen. As you guys know, I believe Penfield is closing, so we thought this is also a good time to put some money into Jackie Durrell.
Having been to many events at Jackie Durrell over the years and seeing the condition of both the bathrooms and the, and the kitchen, I can't, I can't disagree with this item.
I don't have any questions. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay, um, all right. Let's go back because I know there was the discussion about dropping thirty K off of-
Actually a hundred and twenty K off to approving thirty K.
To, to which one item again, Tom?
Yeah, it was the, the inspection of the bridges, of the one bridge.
I mean, I, I mean, I don't, I personally, like, like I said, or like Bill said, I'm sorry, that, you know, part of this would be repairs. It could very well be that these repairs could extend the life for a longer period of time. So, I mean, if we're gonna, if you want to reduce this, I would suggest we take the thing completely off because, I mean, you're leaving only thirty grand.
Well, the thirty grand is to actually do the inspection and come up with a plan. So the inspection at the very least needs to be done.
But what, but we don't need to bond it if it's just thirty grand, right?
Correct, right.
Couldn't we take it off the, totally take it off?
If you can, then I'm okay with that.
So Bill, would you chime in here? Obviously you know more about this than any of us do.
It's just a matter of trying to find a thirty thousand for, for an account to, to do these, the bridge inspections. That's what it really amounts to. If need be, I, I could possibly take them from another account or DPW, but obviously then we're, we're taking it away from some other project.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's a smart idea.
Hey Jared, Jared, where do we stand on contingency for the year-to-date? And the utilization of contingency, I realize we're only in February.
It's an option for us.
Yeah. And what's that balance stand at, Jared?
I don't, I don't know exactly, but we haven't used much of it.
I think we typically, I think we typically put like three hundred thousand in there, don't we?
That's, we, we actually cut it to two hundred this year.
Two hundred this year, okay.
Yeah.
I couldn't remember.
So I just want to be clear though, I, I know Bill, I mean, so I don't want this to be delayed because obviously I'm concerned about safety issues. And so, you know, doing an inspection and having the ability to make repairs right there and then, and not having to wait, go through this whole menagerie of the Board of Selectment, the Board of Finance, the RTM and all of that. I, I mean, I do have some real concern about that. This is a safety issue, it is a bridge that is old and our engineering department has reviewed it very closely and came up with this recommendation. And I think it's appropriate. It's a hundred and fifty thousand to, to get this, to get this done, to get some repairs done. If it requires additional repairs, Bill had said, you can always come back and ask for that additional money. But to me, having the inspection and being able to have the capability to move quickly as opposed to our process, going through our entire process again, is sort of undermining the advice of our engineering department on a bridge that's pretty old.
So the reality is, if this, you're gonna spend thirty grand on the inspection, if you're gonna have a significant enough issue that says it's a safety issue on the bridge, it's gonna be more than a hundred and twenty thousand to repair. Where, where I have an issue here is to give the check for a hundred and twenty thousand that essentially could just be, get you five more years and you're paying for it over twenty. Or there should be a discussion over replacing the bridge if it's bad enough. And I think, you know, that, that's why I'm coming down on it. I don't want to hold anything up and I'd be most, most assuredly if it's a safety issue, I think Bill's gonna be back here right away, asking for a heck of a lot more money to fix it, of which I think we'll, we'll no doubt grant. Because as Bill articulately said, we can't do without that bridge, right?
So, Bill, I'm gonna go back again to you. You put this together with the thought and, and engineering skills to think that this, that a hun, that a hundred and twenty of it could be helpful to do some repairs. Do you want to speak to this or do you think we're gonna have to just not do the hundred and twenty and have to replace the whole bridge? Or would the hundred and twenty sit in the account if we did in fact find out we had to replace the whole bridge and go toward the bigger project? Could you speak more about it?
Uh, yeah, I mean, again, because we're kind of somewhat blindfolded and usually I say, you know, on a ranking of, you know, one to ten, I'm eight or nine confident of the price. On this one, I, I have to admit, I, I said five, if I recall, because we just don't know what, what's there. The way I looked at it is, I mean, if I recall, the way it used to be done is we would get the, the money, but we wouldn't spend it or it wouldn't be part of the, and Jared, you might know more about it. I think the, the way, and I'll be honest with you, I think it was Mr. Mayor who, who would say that, you know, we get the money, but he wouldn't put it in with the bond or something like that until later when we needed to do it. So that is something, and that's what I meant by going back to the board where we would have it all cleared. But we wouldn't, we wouldn't spend it until I, I came back with the report, say, to the, the Board of Selectment, if necessary, to Board of Finance and do it that way, and RTM. Or, or, as I said, we would just wait, we'd have to wait for the report on it. It's just that if there was something fairly significant, Tom's right on, if it's a substructure thing or the deck, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand isn't gonna, isn't gonna be enough. But to fill a scour hole or pour some, like a flowable concrete just to give it some stability, to add some rebars in and stuff like that, you might be able to do, at, at, at least as I said, a significant repair to buy some time. And then that's what that's really for. But I'll be hon, I, I don't, it could be twenty thousand, it could be a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty. I, I really don't know on this one, because we haven't, we haven't done a full-fledged inspection. This is a rarity, this one, for sure.
Right, so for example, could you, if we approve the whole hundred and fifty and you do the inspections and then you say, oh, we can use this hundred and twenty to do some repairs to give it a little more life? Or you could say, you know what, it's a lot more than we thought. We could keep the hundred and twenty in an account and come back and ask for more to add to it. But either way, you'd have the flexibility, correct?
Yeah, if that's possible, and I think it is. I think it's been somewhat done like that in, in the past, but I didn't know if, you know, with the new finance director, I didn't know if the process changed or not.
And the thing is that, Bill, you're not gonna get, for, I don't disagree with what Brenda just said, but you're not gonna get an additional twenty years out of this bridge by spending a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on repairs.
No, 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 I'd be, I'd be, I'd be shocked. As I said, the best window is probably fi, five to ten, you know, realistically.
Right, so Brenda, the key here is the financing of it, right? So it's again, if you want to say, and this is, we need Bill to come back after the inspection and say, here's my recommendation, right? We either spend this now and get an extra ten years out of this bridge, which is if we're lucky, right? Or we need to actually bite the bullet and go after replacing this bridge on the, on the safety thing based on the report. But I don't think I'm comfortable with saying this one fifty should be bonded over twenty years because even Bill, sight unseen, knowing that this bridge is fit, you know, is ninety years old, thinks we're gonna get an additional twenty years out of spending a hundred and twenty thousand on repairs on this bridge. That's where I'm choking on this.
So Bill, can you tell me typically how long bridges last of this nature?
Of, of this nature, it could be anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred years. We have unfortunately some bridges for various reasons that only last sixty and then there are a couple of bridges that, that last a little bit longer, being that it's ninety years old. That's where I said you're, you're probably looking at five to ten years for that. But we really don't know. The screening ones did give it in, there are certain parts that are in good condition, which means, makes me believe maybe we could get more out of it. But we don't know what's in poor condition unfortunately, outside of, as I said, some scour and exposed rebar. The only other thing though, Tom, the other thing to consider is that with the hundred and twenty, and, and I'm just gonna throw out a number of, let's just say if it's sixty thousand to buy a couple of years versus closing down the bridge for several years, because you know it takes, you know, two years to design or one year to get a grant, two years for design and another two years for construction, so.
Unfortunately, you're, that's a very fair point, Bill, and that's why if we wanted to pull this out and do this under a separate bonding resolution for a shorter duration of time, I think that, I think the point you just made is very fair.
Okay, and, and again, I, we picked the twenty years because it always seems to be that's where all the bridges are and, but this one's a little bit different. So I'm amendable to whatever the board, you know, recommends. I just want to, you know, make sure everybody is aware of the situation. And I think, I think we all agree that once we get a, we get the inspection, which is, I think we all agree, we need it right away. And then, and then once we get the recommendations and the report, we'll have a lot better understanding of what's going on.
Yeah.
Um, well, I'm, listen, I'm, I'm inclined, and as you know, we put this on the agenda and we worked on this, I'm inclined to leave it as is. To Bill's point, we could get another five or ten years out of it. Even if we under, we, we uncover, you know, that needs full replacement or massive work, to Bill's point, that wouldn't happen right away. It would take a long time, it would have, it, it wouldn't happen right away. And I think this would be a stopgap regardless of keeping this bridge in safe and in good repair and not have the problems that we would have of having to shut it down to do a whole redo of the bridge. So it buys time, it buys life, and I think it's worth it. Now, Tom, if you want to make a, you want to make an amendment to shorten the amount of time for the bond, I'm amendable to that.
I think that's very fair. I think that's very fair.
I'm, I'm not amendable to, to changing the amount.
No, I'm okay with that, given Bill's last comment, which I think is excellent, regarding the fact that, hey, it's gonna take some time. And we're at a point in this bridge's life that we might have to do it anyway because as he said, you can't close, you can't close the road, right? So, so I agree with you on that. I'm just not amendable to twenty years.
Okay, so can we make an amendment to, I guess what we could do is carry on with all the rest of the items that are on the twenty-year bond, the two education items, and then we could come back and modify the motion to remove this from the twenty-year and then make another motion to accept it as a ten-year.
Bill, is it ten or is it five?
I honestly don't know yet on that. It, it could be either, it could be either one.
I'll go with ten.
Yep. All right, so let's do that. Thank you, Bill. I'm gonna go to our next item. We have Angela's on the line, we have the chairwoman of the Board of Ed, and I believe, I don't see, is Mr. Cummings on?
He's, he is on the phone with us.
Oh, okay, very good. All right, so as we know with these two items, the boiler/burner replacement and we have the elevator modernization, I'm gonna turn it over to Angela's to present. Thank you.
Good afternoon, evening, everyone. So just so you know, the two projects we have for non-recurring, as the selectwoman said, kept track, the Burr Elementary School boilers, these are sectional boilers. There's, and unfortunately, when the building was built, they were located on the second floor. The Boiler One has started to show leaking and is in very poor condition. So we're gonna have, we're looking for the money to replace it. While investigating Boiler One, we've also looked at Boiler Two. We determined that it's actually not that far behind as in failing. And with the fact that they are both on the second floor and will need special equipment and possibly even cutting holes in walls and lifting to get these boilers out of where they are situated and replaced with the new ones in there, we thought it best to do both boilers at the same time. We don't always like to do this so that they're not the same vintage in the building. But because of given their location, we thought it was the best option to do for this particular building. So those two boilers replacement engineering services came in just under a million dollars at nine ninety-six, three seventy is the number we came up with working with the, our provided maintenance contractor along with a couple of different engineering companies to look at the best options and the best way to actually get these boilers out and back in. If there's any questions about that particular project?
Yeah, I definitely have questions. I don't want to cut anybody off though. Does anybody else want to go?
Go for it.
Go ahead, Tom.
Sound like a broken record. Don't sound, sound, sound so excited. All right. Are these the original boilers to the building? Because I seem to recall there's been issues with these boilers all along.
They are the original boilers to the building.
Has there been work done, Angela's, on these boilers through the years?
Through the years, there has been quite a bit of work done on them. Again, they're not the easiest location to work on. So, but yes, there has been work done. Even in my short time here, there has been some, quite a bit of work done.
Did we go back and look and see if these were defective? What was the useful life supposed to be on these boilers?
I can look at that. We did look, talk with the engineers and they didn't seem to think there was anything that we should, would be jumping out as calling them defective. They are pressure steam boilers that are sectional, so they do tend to fail. The, we've replaced the seals between some of the sections on them. seals between some of the sections on them, we've done some other work on them, um. We, nothing really jumped out as defective, though, you know, the Mill Hill one that we just did not too long ago, we had leaks right away with, and we actually got the manufacturer out and they replaced a few of the sections because they thought they were machined incorrectly. So, that is something we did do there.
But some of our older building, these, these boilers have lasted for, God, I wanna say some of them were like fifty years old, right? These haven't even lasted twenty.
Absolutely, and I think the old saying is they don't make them like they used to anymore, so, and that's really what we're seeing with a lot of stuff is it's failing before the old stuff did, I mean, in my day, or I shouldn't say my day, but I would prefer an older car versus a newer car any day of the week, because they used to make them better.
But yeah, but it had, I, that's the easy answer, and I understand it, but have we done the investigation to make sure that there's not something that was identified with being wrong as these, with these boilers? Have we done something to make sure that, you know, this isn't covered under, under something else? Or there's not something with the manufacturer, I wanna make sure before we go ahead and spend this money that we don't find out that there was a problem, and, and by the way, if you went back to the engineers who built this thing, I really don't care what they have to say, because it was put on the second floor anyway, which is a big problem, I, I really want, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, we, we did not work, work with the engineers who designed the building or spec'd out the boilers, we've used, uh, a private engineering company that we've used for other projects. Um, we've, we have done due diligence on it, we've looked at conditions, we've looked at the fact that we use a well water system up there to see if maybe the water could cause more scaling, um, but again, to the best of their ability without tearing them completely apart, which at that point, we might as well replace them, they're, they're not identifying, there's no red flags that are jumping out at them.
Well, I would say we do that, are you planning on replacing them with the same type of boilers that are there, or are we going with a different type of boiler?
We did pull in, we did include in this money some engineering costs, so that we can look at potentially doing a, uh, smaller, uh, not a sectional boiler, but more of a high efficiency boiler, ones like we've done up at, uh, North Straffield. Uh, again, a lot easier to maneuver and work around being in a closet on the second floor because of the size of the high, high contingency boilers, but, um, we did bring money in so that we could look at different options for that.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're not just going with the path of least resistance and saying, oh, well, these failed, we've gotta replace them, we got the budget approved, so let's just replace them. I really wanna know why these things failed if it wasn't just, you know, as you said, they don't make them like they used to, that, that's the, and I don't mean it at you, but that's kinda the easy answer, I wanna make sure there wasn't something done wrong here, and that we don't have something that we should be going after for that.
We can have our engineers, we're gonna perform the construction administrative services, take a deeper look as the boilers are actually being pulled apart and taken and craned out of the area to see, once we start doing this work, if anything then jumps out at them, that might be the opportunity there. Um, again, like I said, we're, we are looking at different options, we also looked at costs to repipe the building to bring them to the first floor, and it just wasn't, it wasn't cost, we'd have to run all new water lines down and we don't really have the space on the second flo- on the first floor without taking over pretty much the whole gym storage room. So then we have gym teachers moving mats up and downstairs, and we didn't think that was the best option to go with that.
Plus, it would be to do all the, all those, well, I don't know whether that's the best option, is it the best option if we can move the boilers downstairs and get to them easier?
I, again, if, if we're going, we're gonna, we did look at that, we would probably look at it a little for, more if we had to go with a sectional boiler, but if we are able to go with a high efficiency boiler, which will fit into a very, a much smaller footprint, then we can look at that as well.
And these higher efficiencies, we should save in fuel bills, I would imagine?
We should save in fuel bills with them, they are, like, they're called high efficiency. Uh, one of the things that, one of the things we are working to do with the new high efficiency boilers is go with a fully gas run system, in, in past, we've done a dual burner, which has always cost us more because there used to be incentives to do dual boil, boilers with, uh, gas and oil, those incentives don't exist anymore, so at this point, there's no real reason to continue pushing that way at the additional cost of having a dual burner as well.
What's, um, also, I remember when that building opened, shows you however long I've been doing this, that there was a lot of talk about, in certain times, there was, the air conditioning was on in one area, the heater was on in the other area, and it was all sorts of messed up. Um, does this help solve that issue, or how's that go on?
Um, I, I have to say, I'm, I, I don't know if that was resolved before my time here, but I haven't really heard those issues. I do know we do have some cooling issues and some heating issues, mainly because of the large open floor plan of the building and the fact that it's so much glass in the building.
Exactly.
It's hard to heat and cool, but a high efficiency boiler should help with that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about that one? If I can tell you about the Fairfield Ludlow High School elevator replacement. Um, so I just wanted to start by saying that I've done quite a bit of research on this elevator, and no one can actually tell me the year it was installed, however, several people at this point have told me they believe it was original to the building, so it's quite old, so that being said, one of the problems we had in the really early school year was that, um, this elevator went down and it needed a new replacement control board in it, and the only way to get this board was for the manu- the company to come and pull this board out, and they pretty much shipped it to a gentleman in his garage who spent the time to rebuild the burnout board and get it back to us, because the parts are not available for this elevator, the boards are not available for this elevator, and the concern is if this elevator goes down again, we are gonna be without an elevator in that part of the building. This elevator services the lower shop areas and auto shop areas, along with some of the, uh, dressing rooms for the sports teams, and unfortunately, if anyone was confined to a wheelchair or could not handle moving up and down the stairs, the only alternative way to get them down to the lower area that this elevator handles would be to bring them outside and around through the driveway and back into the building in the back. So that's why we felt it important to get this elevator repla- uh, I'm sorry, they don't call it replaced in the elevator business, they call it monitor, modernization. So we're gonna modernize the elevator.
Don't elevators have to get inspected every year?
They do, and these are, we have a preventative maintenance program where they are inspected. Um, I won't say by the state any longer, the state is not handling elevator inspections. Your preventative maintenance company is required to do the inspections now and send their reports to the state, and then the state issues a certificate based on that report.
And this, despite these issues, this, the certificate passed?
It did, the, they look at more of the safety issues, the drop, the fall, the weight carriage, they're not looking at the actual control boards.
Okay.
Um, are there any additional questions on this item? Alright, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, Attorney Baldwin's on the line, I'm gonna ask a quick, uh, question of, for advice.
I'm here.
Thank you, um, so, wh- what is your recommendation on how to break this motion out? I mean, could I make a motion, could, could we keep the motion as is? Excuse me, and just amend it to say that the engineering, uh, the underwater bridge inspection and repairs will be at a ten, or should I just pull it out, do it separately?
Um, I, I, I don't think it, it should make a difference, maybe that's a question for bond counsel, but I, I think it's okay, and since this item is going to other boards, it's gonna go up to the Board of Finance presumably, right?
Right.
So, so, uh, as long as your intention is, um, is made clear, you can do it, uh, whatever way is easiest for you, but once it gets to that final stage before the RTM, I think it's important that the language be, um, be considered appropriate by our bound counsel, but I, I don't see it as a problem now.
Alright, so what I think I'm gonna do is, um.
I, I have a thought, if you, if you want.
Well, what I was gonna do, Tom, was I'm gonna break, I'm going to, um, I think we should rescind the motion, um, what's your, what's your idea, Tom?
Good, I did it bef- we did it before at the Board of Finance years ago, I think the way we do it is I ju- I'll make a motion that we remove that one item from this bond resolution and that we, um, put it into a second bond resolution that has all the exact same terms except the length of that bond resolution should be ten years.
So we have a motion on the floor, uh, and a second on all of the items, so.
We could rescind that motion.
Yeah, I think we should rescind the motion, um, and then go back and, um.
Move to remove it.
Amend this motion.
Yep.
So if you, with the mover and the second, or can they, um?
Why do we have to rescind it, I'm, I don't?
I don't know, I just thought we could start fresh and then we could approve it without that item. Or do you want, I mean, we can't approve this if it's not amended.
Right, so, M- Mr. Baldwin, is there any way I, can I make a motion that we split the existing bond resolution in two? To keep all the key terms except for that one item, to move that into a separate bond resolution with a, with a term of ten years versus the twenty years that we put all the other items in?
Yeah, I, this is Attorney Baldwin, I, I think you can, but I think, uh, to the first select woman's point,
Yep.
Um, if the language of the original motion is to approve all of them, it might just be easier to do as suggested and, and rescind that motion, and then you can, you can consider these items and, and you can present your motion.
We can, okay, I didn't know whether we would, would be able to do that, that's fine, wh- however you guys think is best.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's rescind it.
I move to rescind the motion as, uh, that's on the floor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, um, Jim, how do you think we would word this, should I just list the items except for that item?
Well, sh- I could make a motion to remove that item from.
Okay, do that.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to remove the item as listed, uh, the bridge item, I don't have it right in front of me.
Underwater bridge inspection and repairs.
Yeah, as stated on the agenda.
Second it.
Okay, and that's for a hundred and fifty thousand, it'd be clear.
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I make that motion, uh, aye.
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 Okay, so now we are back and, uh, Jared?
We can move to now approve all of it, but then we'll have to make another motion about whatever that bridge item is, we'll have to, cause that now is a dangling item.
Yep, but the resolution is different, um.
In that it doesn't include the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
So I make a motion to approve the, the bond resolutions as amended for the agenda.
Second it.
So wait, I need the number, excuse me.
Sorry, I don't have now the, I don't have it in front of me.
I'll get it to you, Brenda.
Three, eight, six, seven, Jared, do you have the number? Jared, what would be the number that we would be using in the bond resolution for the twenty years?
Three, seven, one, seven, eight, nine, nine.
Three, seven, one, seven, eight, nine, nine, okay, so, um, can I get a motion to approve, uh, and adopt a bond resolution entitled the resolution appropriating three million, seven, one, seven, eight, ninety-nine for the cost of certain non-recurring capital projects and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation for twenty years?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
Well, to be clear, that now new amount is reflected minus, okay, yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. So I'm going to ask for a motion from the floor to approve the, excuse me, to approve a bond entitled, uh, a bond for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the underwater bridge inspection repairs for the period of ten years and reflecting the same bond language that we were using in the twenty year, except for it be ten years.
So moved.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All aye. Motion carries unanimously, and Prue, if you have any questions, I hope that you've got all that.
Thank you, ladies, by the way.
Okay, alright. Alright, so, um, our next item is item number six, do, can I get a motion to consider and act upon the tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of fifty-four, two ninety-two?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any questions on this item? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. And, um, before, uh, I'm gonna open up item number seven, I just have a couple of comments and then I'll open it up to the board. Um, I just wanna, uh, note that, as you may, it may have read in my newsletter on Friday, we had, uh, Fairfield had the presence of two Olympi- Olympians, uh, this year, and I wanted to congratulate Kristin Santos and Mac Forland for representing our town and Connecticut on the world stage. Uh, we look forward to watching Mac on Wednesday compete in his freestyle big air final, so I hope you're all gonna be tuning in to cheer him on. Um, the town's social services department, I wanna note this, I added in my newsletter, but I want people to, um, know that pe- that we are seeking, uh, volunteers in the social services department, middle and high school students to help with snow shoveling for homebound seniors and people with disabilities who can't shovel their sidewalks. And so for more, like, more information on how to be involved in this program, uh, it, uh, people should call two oh three, two five six, thirty-one, sixty-six. And, um, I just wanna note that I do try my best to include all town related news and updates in the town update that goes out every other Friday, but for residents who currently, um, don't receive it and are listening now, they can sign up at the homepage at www.fairfieldct.org. And then I'm gonna open it up, um, for, uh, any discussion from members uh, who wanna bring up any items, I know Tom wanted to talk about the hockey letter that we all signed and some, uh, developments, Tom, did you wanna update the board?
Sure, thanks, um, first of all, thanks to both Brenda and Nancy for, uh, signing their names to the letter supporting the Fairfield co-op hockey, uh, boys team for the two high schools, Ward and Ludlow, uh, the team is eleven and two, but they're precluded from uh, taking part in the state CIAC tournament this year, uh, due to some co-op rules. Uh, we all signed a letter asking, um, the CIAC to, to reconsider their position given they canceled the last two tournaments, uh, due to COVID. Um, the CIAC sent us a strongly worded letter back, I'd say, telling us, no, they weren't gonna reconsider it, and, um, I have since asked that they consider, much as our letter did, uh, changing the rules going forward based on safety issues. Um, we currently had thirty-four, thirty-five student athletes who tried out for the team. Uh, it's very hard to get between the ages of eighteen and fourteen, uh, thirty-five or r- rather enough athletes to field a, a varsity team, uh, where those kids aren't gonna get hurt. Remember, this is a sport that is played on skates at a very high rate of speed, and having a fourteen-year-old at a hundred and twenty pounds versus an eighteen-year-old at a hundred and eighty to two hundred pounds is a, is a serious situation and can result in insignificant injury. So we've asked on a go-forward basis that they reconsider their rules on the numbers, um, because tryouts don't mean that you're necessarily qualified to play at that level from a safety perspective. Um, in addition, the captains of those teams, who I have to tell you, I'm very impressed with the captains of the team, that the four seniors have comported themselves, uh, extremely well, they wrote a letter on their own volition to the CIAC before the season even began. The CIAC, as I understand it, did not even bother to respond. The CIAC, as I understand it, did not even bother to respond to that letter. Um, but they advocated for themselves in a very respectful way. And they've now gone about and started a, an online petition, which as of the last time I checked, it has over fifteen hundred signatures, uh, from around the state asking the CIAC to let these boys, uh, participate this, this year. So if anything, uh, if they're unsuccessful in their bid, at least they've learned to advocate for themselves. They learned how the process works, um, and they've learned that sometimes life isn't fair. So, uh, kudos to these, uh, young men for what they did to their, to their captains. And thank you to my colleagues after bringing it to the attention. It took about two minutes, uh, for everybody to get on the same page, which I thought was, um, very good. And Brenda, thank you for letting me bring it up at the meeting and give a brief update.
Absolutely, sure. Um, some people asked me about the meeting situation in terms of public and then the hybrid, and asked me if there was an update on that, and I would love to know myself.
Sure, so as I, um, uh, I, I, I think I did update, um, I can't remember when last time I did, but I have spoken to the chairs of, uh, the moderator, excuse me, and the chairperson um, of the, uh, Board of Finance and, uh, any resident. You know, we've had, I think, one or two ask, um, about it. Um, we were hoping to get, we put together a sort of bridge system because of the supply chain issues, and we were working on, uh, settling how to, how to manage these meetings, where the spaces were gonna be, and we went met on site, this was going back a couple of months now, and had, uh, quite a few meetings with our Board of Ed counterparts, um, their, their people and our people at our IT department. And then we were looking at doing the whole Zoom, um, rooms, they're called. And then after Dave Kelly had looked at it quite extensively, he was a little concerned about, about us doing, uh, specifically only Zoom, and he wanted us to, uh, he wanted to look at it a little more closely, their proposal. And then he, his proposal was to have our own sort of, uh, people install equipment that we could utilize in these rooms, and then that, that we would use some Zoom components, but we would also be able to use any other component, for example, WebEx or meetings or whatever, um, venues. And obviously, the hybrid is going to be, uh, in a, in a way that if you're, regardless if you're home as a, a presenter, or if you're home as a member of the public or as a member of a board or commission, you will have the same, um, feeling as if you're in the room. So people, some people can be in the room, people could be, um, virtual, but it feels the same for everyone, right? So everyone hears, everyone sees, and it's a much more comprehensive system. So when we found out that it was gonna take a while because of the supply stuff and all of that and working all of this out, Dave was gonna put together a, um, sort of a bridge, uh, system that we would be able to use. Frankly, it would be, it, we could do it, but it's very, um, antiquated. It's not gonna be great. People aren't gonna be able to really hear and see in the way they can now, um, in the way we're going to be doing it, hybrid with the full system in place. And then Omnicrom hit and nobody, everybody stopped talking about it. Um, and I realized that now people, now that we're kind of moving through this, people are talking about it more often. We're just not there yet, um, unfortunately. And so we could, um, like I said, use this bridge system, um, and it, but just won't be as good as this system we're using right now, where everyone can see everyone and everyone can hear everyone, um, and the people still have the option of, um, attending remotely, as we are going to be able to do when we have the full hybrid system. And I actually spoke about this, uh, with, uh, the Chairwoman of the Board of Finance because we, she wanted to ask me where we were on this, I think it was last week. And, you know, I told her, listen, you, we could try to do this hybrid system if you want, just so you know, it's not gonna be fabulous. Um, you're not gonna have that full feeling, um, that you feel. And I know she did discuss it, I believe, on her last Board of Finance meeting with her membership, that she felt like she wanted to stay in this venue, um, and PP&amp;Z is doing it too. I mean, they present full documents. Attorneys come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and present full documents on this venue, and the public, you know, participates and it's, and frankly, the Planning and Zoning meetings, I would venture to say, are the most widely attended meetings in our town because they could be, you know, it's always a big, important issue that's happening in a neighborhood. So, and I, I told her, I also shared with, uh, uh, Lori Charlton that the public, you know, the feedback that we get in my office has been overwhelmingly positive. Uh, people really enjoy this opportunity, you know, uh, since COVID. And that's part of the reason, uh, that we wanted to modernize our meetings from this experience. And we put the four hundred thousand in for the ARPA funds to modernize our meeting rooms. It's just taking a little longer than, um, we had hoped. So that's kind of where we are on this, um, and they are working on it. Um, but again, it's gonna take some time to get all this equipment in because of the supply chains, uh, issues. Is that, Nance?
Yep, thank you for the update.
Sure.
Uh, Brenda, just so that you know, I've, I've received a lot of positive comments. I mean, we do have technology snafus every once in a while, granted. Um, but I receive a lot of positive comments over having them available online like this and people to participate. So I think modernizing it is, is the right way to go about it.
Yeah, and I, I'm really looking forward to the system, and we did put quite a bit of time in meetings with the IT department and, you know, going to visit the spaces and talking to all the boards and commissions about, you know, when. We're even asking a couple to move around their meeting nights so we could utilize the Board of Ed, uh, offices more fully and meeting with Fair TV and meeting with all of these different, um, you know, parts. It's a lot more complicated than you would think.
Yeah.
But again, I think it's gonna be really great. Um, and even, uh, Lori and I were speaking about it on the phone. She said, you know, it just makes sense for departments, especially during our budget meetings, instead of sitting in a room waiting all night long to maybe get one question after four hours of a meeting or longer, um, as opposed to being at home with earbuds in and a laptop and then, you know, being available to answer a question is so much more productive, I think. And considerate of their time. Uh, so at any rate, um-
A- and by the way, with our, you know, with Nancy and I both having full-time jobs outside the town as well as other elected officials, i- it is very convenient for us as well, and we'd be lying if we didn't say that, so.
No, I, I realize that, and, and there's gonna be instances where there are, um, members of boards and commissions who may be, uh, having a difficult, difficult issue on a meeting night with childcare or they're, you know, have a, or have a, if some issue where they can't attend, or maybe they're sick and they don't wanna be around other people, um, but still wanna be on the meeting and participate. So, let's just hope the supply chain thing, it's quick and we can get moving 'cause I think it's gonna be really cool, and I think our town's gonna, um, our elected officials and our, our residents are gonna really, uh, be happy with the final product.
Is there any way, maybe somebody can do a demo of what it might be to help them understand what it's gonna be once it gets there? Is that possible, Bren?
You know, I don't know, um, you know, I mean, Dave can talk about it. I don't know about a demo. We did look at, uh, a Zoom, like, presentation when we first started this whole journey and the Zoom room and how it works, but we're gonna have, it's gonna be slightly modified, so I don't know if that will give the same. But there's cameras installed and microphones and all of this. So, for example, if there's people in the room and then there's people who are online, members or presenters, when the person speaks, it'll go to them. So you'll still, and there'll be a screen, big screen up in the actual physical location for those people who are attending, um, in person, but at the same time, everyone is able to see everyone.
Yep.
So, I don't know if there's like a presentation that shows that exactly, um, but-
I do, I do know that college classrooms are using that. I think my son's had that actually available in his, some of his college classes. So, thank you.
Sure. Um, if there's noth- no other items, um, I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
I'll se- I'll second it.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dave Kelly?
Okay, it's just gonna take me a couple of minutes here to get set up.
Sure, I understand. Thank you. Litigation, the floor securities litigation with Attorney Matthew Tuchelli and Attorney Jim Baldwin.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Unmuted.
Thank you. Um, can I get a motion to, uh, come back into public session?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the recommendations of Attorney Tuchello with floor regarding floor securities contingent upon the joint, uh, the Joint Retirement Investment Board that oversees the pensions for their consideration and approval. Motion?
So moved.
Yeah, and I'll second it.
All right, I'll open it up for any discussion by the board.
Madam First Black Woman, can I just ask you to remind, uh, everyone that, know whether or not any votes were taken during executive session?
Right, I'm sorry. I apologize. There were no votes taken in executive session.
Thank you.
Uh, would it be appropriate this time to say that, uh, I support this based on the advice of counsel, but that ultimately it's in the wheelhouse of the J-Rib and therefore we are moving this through?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what, what Nancy-
As advised.
Yeah, I'd just like to e- echo what Nancy just said. Sorry for cutting you off, Nance. Um, our role here is, is counsel to the J-Rib. I don't want them to take that. Uh, our vote here is we are telling them what to do. We are moving this forward for their consideration, uh, given they've been more heavily involved in the day-to-day, uh, of this matter uh, on a, on a previous basis.
Okay. Um, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, everyone, and can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Thanks.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good evening.